Mayor Roland Dykes.
President.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
President.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Present.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith, City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincher.
Here.
Thank you, Tina. In your package, you had a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting, the regular session, from February 8, 2022. Had a chance to look at those minutes. We will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the previous minutes from February 8, 2022. It has been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like aye. Hearing none, motion carries. Item four, proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor or by Vice Mayor Profit.
All the thing I was going to say is say thank you to the city. I don't know, the South River Apartments down there doing different things. How much better it looks down there at the new parking lot across from Newport Hardware and the beauty shop. Heard several comments in town how much improvement that made. Just wanted to tell you thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor. Item five is communications from the city administrator.
Well, thank you, Mayor. On our COVID update, hopefully, we may be winding down. Won't have to give this every month. But currently, we have no employees that are out or under any COVID restrictions, and the numbers continue to slowly drop. And I think everybody's probably aware of the CDC has issued new mask guidelines that you're not required to wear masks indoors anymore. So that's good news as far as I'm concerned. The only other thing I have is just to make you aware, the Cock County High School Choir has requested donations from the city for a trip to New York to sing at Carnegie Hall. And the city has pledged $500 to their trip and just to make you all aware in case you all want to make any monies available from your donation accounts. But we have pledged $500 to them. I think they said, I don't have, I don't think I've got it in my book, but.
They raised $60,000.
Yeah, but they need $100,000 to make the trip.
It's closer to 70 now than we had to Monday. And I think it was 69 or over 69,000 off the payout.
About 2,500 per.
2,500 per senior at 48 per. I don't know if anybody could do math. Do that in your head? I can't. Anyway.
That's all I got.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Short and sweet. Thank you, James. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. And item A is consideration of reappointment to the beer board, Mr. L.C. Gregg.
I make a motion to reappoint Mr. L.C. Gregg to the beer board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to reappoint Mr. L.C. Gregg to the beer board. Has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays like aye. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, consideration of appointment to the Cock County Municipal Solid Waste Planning Region. Recently, I did receive a notice from the county mayor that this planning commission was being reestablished and that we, the city, did have one spot on that board. I had been asked to appoint someone, and I approached a couple of people about that, and Ms. Luanna Odinger has accepted the position. And I guess at this point, we probably don't need a motion to do that.
No, that's your point. Yeah, that's your point, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Adine. Alderwoman, Alderwoman Adine. It's, she was a little reluctant at times, but.
It sounds like a crappy job, but somebody's got to do it.
All right. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Do we have anything? No, no reports. Tanner Millen, nothing?
Nothing to report.
Okay, item eight is old business, unfinished business. It's consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2022-02, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2022-02, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2021-2022 for Newport Grammar School.
Okay.
We need a roll call.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We need a roll call, Tina.
We need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-02, is read.
I see. Okay, we do have a motion on the board then to approve, motion 20, number 2022-02, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School has been properly seconded. We do need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-03, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, Chapter III Purchasing Policy.
And make sure that's read. The full caption into the record, it's ordinance 2022-03, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport Municipal Code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, Chapter III Purchasing Policy, Section 5-306, purchases of $100 to $499.99.
Then what do you want, Tina?
Yeah, this was a change that a board had made previously many years ago, and the change was made, and the city's following it for the amount of purchases from 100 to 3,999, but the table of contents didn't get changed. So this just updates the table of contents.
I know.
Sorry. But technically, I got it.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the reading of ordinance number 2022-03, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, Chapter III Purchasing Policy. It has been properly seconded. Right, so we need a roll call on this one, too.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-04, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, adding Chapter IV Credit Card Processing Policy.
And I believe that is the caption, so that'll stand for that. Good job, man.
It happens every now and then. Okay, we need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion on the board then, and I won't reread that since it's already been captioned. It has been properly seconded and will require a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Number nine is new business, and item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-05, amending the city of Newport Municipal Code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, adding Chapter V Grant and Management Policy and Procedures.
Mayor, this is something that Tina has grown up, it came from the auditors. This was done at the auditor's request. They had talked to us about it till last year after the audit, they had discussed that it might be necessary for us to look at doing that, and so we had been kind of looking at it. And then this year, after the audit, they felt like that we needed to adopt one. And so Tina researched and got some samples of them from other places, and this is what she came up with, and she got some help from some other folks, too. But this is coming at the recommendation of the auditors.
Okay. You've heard the explanation? Do we need to read that into caption or you read it? Okay. All right, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
All right, a motion on the board did, and since that ordinance has already been captioned, please, well, we have a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-06, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport to rezone location 257 Old Knoxville Highway.
That is Rick Faust's property. It's always been a commercial building. I think maybe at one point, I did some history digging today, I guess at one point it had a salon in it, and maybe the lady that worked there lived in the building, so that would have been, why it would have been allowed as a residential zoning. But since then, it's, it should be a C2. Everything around it's a C2. It's, that line runs just through that piece of property. It just cuts out that Rick's property, and so this is just going to zone it properly back into the, not back into the CT, but put it in the C2 where it needs to be. It's just correcting something that didn't get done in the 80s or possibly the 90s whenever Rick moved in there.
I can remember that salon being there, but it's been a long time ago.
I don't, so I had to ask someone else about it. It was in middle school.
Maybe not. Anyway, all right, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
A motion to approve ordinance 2022-06.
Second.
Excuse me. Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve ordinance number 2022-06, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport to rezone location 257 Old Knoxville Highway. It has been properly seconded. Please, are there any questions to the motion? If not, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And ayes like aye. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
We need a roll call on that, Mayor.
We need a roll call?
It was an ordinance, yes. An ordinance, we need a roll call. I'm sorry.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Again. Item C, consideration of requests to apply for Tennessee Fire Adapted Communities Program for the fire department.
Yes, and this is a, it's a federal grant that's given through, through the Tennessee Department of Forestry, and Cliff King and his boss has been working and got us, we're pretty much accepted for it. It's a 100% reimbursement grant. We can get fire prevention materials, tools, protective equipment, and then some other special projects that we can use. So I just have to have your permission to accept that.
You've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the fire chief to apply for the Tennessee Fire Adapted Communities Program for the fire department. It has been properly seconded. Do we need a roll call on that one? Okay, now we, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like aye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Nays like aye. If you get that, you interrupted my motion there. We had nays, no nays, so motion carries.
Thank you.
I wish more of the grants were like that. You can have it if you'll just apply for it.
100%.
100% grant. Okay, item D is discussion of woodland park at White Oak Park.
First of all, bringing you up to speed on the White Oak Park, a few months back, I asked for permission to begin negotiations with a couple of property owners on White Oak to expand the current White Oak Park. And I can report back that one of those property owners has agreed to sell. I've got the contract right here, and if everybody's good with it and nobody has a problem, I'll go ahead and sign that tomorrow. The one piece on the corner, the smaller piece with no house on it on the northern corner, we've agreed to purchase for $11,000. And the adjacent property on the southern corner, as of right now, he, the mayor has worked diligently trying to negotiate with him, and he's went back and forth. He will sell, he won't sell, he will sell, he won't sell, and right now, it's up in the air. But what I'd like to do, and first of all, I should have started out with this. You know, we've talked quite a bit over the past, almost a year now, about the COVID money. And one of the things that can be done with the COVID money is to, well, a couple of things. One is to deal with blighted properties, to try to get those out of the neighborhood, to clean up a neighborhood and make it more presentable. Another thing you can do with the COVID money is to build or expand parks, because that allows people to get outside, to socially distance, and so both of those are things you can use the COVID money for. And so that's what I've been trying to do, is to use some of the COVID money on this project, and I've got another project here, I'll talk about the woodland park. But what I would like to do now is, there is another piece between the park, now that this, it's kind of falling apart over here on the Dockery property, there is another piece, and I put it in your packet there, between the piece that we've now come to agreement on, there's a piece of property between it and the current park, and behind this piece that we've come to an agreement on, there is a blighted property. And I would like permission to see if I can negotiate with those folks to purchase those properties to expand the park. And that way, if we could get those two, the park would have an L shape to it, and it would go from corner to corner and then halfway up the block this way. And we'd still have, we could still make a really nice park out of it by expanding it. And again, this can all be done with COVID funds. And so I would like to continue working on this project to try to get the park up to a size that would be comparable to the other parks that we have. Right now, it's the smallest park by far in the city. It's about twice as big as this room. And it really needs to be expanded where it's a more usable space. Of course, what, the place it's on now was donated, and it's, and it was great that it was, and we made the best we could out of it. But we have an opportunity with these blighted properties around it to kill two birds with one stone, to clean up these blighted properties, and at the same time, expand the park there and make it, like I say, more comparable to the other parks, the other five satellite parks, well, the other four, it's one of five, the other four satellite parks in the city. And be able to do a lot of the same things on it that we've done on the others, the little pavilions and the picnic tables and the playgrounds and those kinds of things, that the other property is just too small and too, and it's too sloped to do a whole lot with. And so we would make it more of a green space, probably just leave, we'd leave the basketball court on it, but the rest of it would just be a green space, and then we would run the playground and the pavilion and the parking area on down through the other properties. So that's one thing I would, I'm asking for permission to do. The other thing, and I have spoken with y'all individually about this, but this is a really and truly, I feel, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. A lot of places, cities all around, have what's called woodland parks. And basically, that is sections of woodland that they add into their trail systems for people to hike and picnic and ride bikes and mountain bikes and that kind of thing. And there is a 90-acre tract that is near our main city park. There is a property owner who owns some property between the city park and this woodland area of 90 acres that we would have to work with, and he's, he seems willing to try to work with us to have, so we could join the main city park to this wooded area and tie that in and have hiking trails and a picnic area and those kinds of things over there, behind the main city park. And it's something that I'm really excited about, and you all have expressed it when in speaking with you individually, that you think that it would be a good thing. And again, we can use the COVID money for it. So it would be a major, major addition to our community, and at no expense locally. It would be using this federal money, which has so many limitations on it on what you can do with it. And, you know, I just thought, like, again, it's absolutely a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And so on both of those cases for the park system, I would like your permission to see where, see if we can negotiate with these folks and see where we can go with these two projects and these two parks. And both of them would be expansions. It's expanding the White Oak Park and expanding the main city park on Smith Street into this woodland.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir. No, that's it. Go ahead.
Do you think you'll have any problems getting, you know, tying those properties together?
I don't think so. I think the, I haven't spoken, I wasn't going to speak with anybody. The only person I have spoken to is one of the owners of the 90 acres, because if they weren't interested, because it's not for sale, they don't have it advertised for sale, but it's been sitting there for a long time. And so the only thing I did was have a mutual friend approach them about would they be interested in selling it? Because if they weren't interested in selling it, it was a moot point. And they said, yes, they would be interested in selling it, but they wouldn't put a price on it. They said to make them an offer. And so I'm wouldn't going to do anything without permission from the council, because I have to have y'all's approval before I can talk to anybody about purchasing anything like that. So, but Mark Robinson had talked to the guy that owns the trailer park, which is, owns that little section between us and this property. And Mark told him that we were possibly interested in buying that little end up there behind the park, and would he have any interest in selling it? And he said, well, yeah, he'd be interested in talking about it. So I haven't spoken, but I haven't spoken, negotiated, or talked to anybody. I wasn't going to do anything without permission. So, but I think so. It just depends on, you know, what, again, what they want for it.
We thought it joined everything together.
Yeah.
We did, and found out that it was just sprawled in between.
Yeah, yes, sir. And when I first looked at it, I thought that it joined our property already, but it comes up just a little short. And there's one, there's one, there's two tracks, but they're both owned by the same person. And that's between the woodland and the city park. And we, at the very least, we'd have to have a right of way across it. But I'd like to just have the whole little piece and tie it all together, but at the very least, we'd have to have a right of way across it to tie them together. And then there's another piece that's off Rice Street, up on top of the hill, where the water tower is, that there used to be a house there and it burned. And when you, at it, you can walk out on top of the ridge, because there's a big ridge on the property. And if we had that piece, we could just, like, folks like me that don't want to climb up that ridge could park there at a trailhead and just walk out on the ridge and have the view. There's a fantastic view up there.
One pretty view of the city of Newport.
Yeah, that's true. And then, and also, the, when the new highway, the bypass goes through, there's going to be about a quarter mile of highway frontage on the new road with this property, and we could look at doing a trailhead there. My goal would be, in preliminary talks with Tim Dockery, would be to have three trailheads, have one at the city park, at the main city park, have one up on top of the hill behind Rice Street, and then have another one off the new bypass. And that way, there would be three access points to that. It's kind of like a miniature state park is kind of what it boils down to. But so, you know, I saw Knoxville's got just huge woodland parks down there tied into their trail systems down there. And a lot of, you know, in the magazine or the little newspaper thing that we get from TML, you all the time see it in there, of course, other cities around have dedicated new woodland parks, and they're very popular right now. And again, I just think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that a tract, 90 acres of woodland that's right up against the city park is available to be purchased, and then you've got the money from the federal government through the COVID funds to purchase the property potentially. So that was an opportunity I just couldn't pass up to see what y'all thought about it and see where we.
We just want approval tonight, but you don't, you can't do anything if, it looks like putting the cart before the horse.
Oh, I just need permission to talk to them about it. I don't, you know, without permission, if y'all aren't interested in doing it, then I don't have any authority to go talk to them. If y'all say, no, don't do it, then I don't go talk to anybody. But if you say do it, then I've got the authority to go and negotiate.
I think it's a great idea. I'll make the motion to let James proceed.
Right. Second, motion second. Yeah. But really, I just want to know when you get that right of way out there for concerned around the fire department.
Well, without, you know, it's kind of a, it's, like you say, putting the cart before the horse. If we don't come to an agreement on the 90 acres, there's no point in talking to anybody else, because we won't need a right of way. You know, if we can't, if we can't come to terms on, now, he's willing to sell. That don't mean that he'll want a price that we're willing to pay, you know, because he wouldn't say what he wanted for it. He said, tell us to make an offer. And so because we make an offer, doesn't mean that he'll accept it. And so that's where negotiations come in. You know, we negotiated back and forth on the one piece that we've agreed to purchase, and we've tried to negotiate back and forth with the other gentleman, and we went up, and then he just said, didn't want to sell it. So after we went up, he said didn't want to sell it.
Well, that's my question, is it a limited time offer on our part if you have a holdout? And six weeks later, he comes up and says, yeah, I want to do it.
Well, what he's going to, back to the, this, the property on White Oak, what he's up against, this is a blighted property, and it's pretty bad. And so we had already put him on notice to clean it up before we became interested in buying it. And so when we started negotiating with him, because we're going to have to clean it up if we buy it, then we'll have to clean it up. And when we began negotiating with him, we stopped pressuring him to clean it up, because if we buy it, we'll clean it up. So we didn't want to look like we were putting the screws to him to sell to us or, you know, you see what I'm saying? You know, you don't want to be applying pressure on him to clean it up and trying to buy it at the same time, because that could look like you're taking advantage of your position. But if he's not going to sell it, then he's going to have to go back on notice to clean it up, and we will give him a timeframe on when he. And we will give him a timeframe on, on when, on how long he'll have to get started on cleaning it up. And it's not going to be easy to clean. It's got a, it's got a house on it and part of another house on it. And it's got a lot of vehicles, it's got a lot of debris on it, it's got a partial of a block building on it, you know. It's not going to be an easy piece of property to clean up. It's going to take some heavy equipment to clean it. You can't just go there and get a trash bag and go around pick some stuff up. It's going to require demolition and removal and, and all that kind of stuff. So when, you know, he may come back later, I don't know. But I just, I just want to, an alternative, because as of right now, it's, it's, they're saying no. So I just want him to look in a way we could continue to try to expand on that park by looking at the other two properties that are there and just letting that go. If they say they're not going to sell, I'm, I'm not going to bother them anymore about it. But we will be sending them a letter that they're back on notice to clean it up because it's one of the most blighted properties in the neighborhood.
And we've given him several incentives to, to sell on the property, not just monetary, but we've put to names, Pavilion, that we put on the property after his family and several, a few other incentives in his deal.
And the neighborhood's in favor of it. The neighbor, the neighborhood's been encouraging them to sell. And, you know, they'd say it's people's property, it's their right to sell or keep it. I mean, we don't grudge anybody, but, but the wheels of progress have to keep turning.
Does this person live there?
Yes.
Yeah.
He lives on a lot that adjoins this lot.
Okay.
And that was one of his concerns was that he didn't know if he wanted a playground in his backyard, having to listen to it. But it's going to be across the road. Yeah, it's coming to the neighborhood one way or another, I hope, so.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Make motion, let you go.
County made a motion.
Is it seconded?
Yes.
I don't think it was ever seconded.
Yes.
It was, okay. All right, we have a motion then on the board to allow James to continue to negotiate with property owners. It's been properly seconded. Signify, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye and any nays like sign.
Thank you for the job you're doing on that table.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate it. I think if we can, I'm real excited, I'm excited about it. I, I love working on these parks, you know, and that's been something you all have emphasized and allowed me to do. And, you know, we've expanded every park, improved the facilities, we brought back the Brighttown Park, it was totally just a green space and we brought it back. It's the best shape it's ever been in. And if we can get this, get Wild Oak expanded and get this, this woodland extension on the main park, then, you know, you all will have dramatically transformed the, the park system in the city of Newport.
Okay, if that motion did carry, I think, did I leave that out? Okay, consideration of creating a new administrative clerical position.
Okay, Mayor, that's me again. Recently, I was approached by my assistant, executive assistant, Regina Thornton, about asking for some help with updating the code book. The code book is way behind and she, she tries to work on it and when she, when she's got time to work on it, but, but she said that it was her opinion that somebody working full time on it would take a year to get it up to date in the book and also online. And we are starting to have some problems with folks looking online and not finding a rule that actually exists, it's just not been, been brought up to date. And so I was weighing that about trying to find a way to get her some help. And then, lo and behold, about a week later, I was approached by Tina, who was asking for some clerical help on some things she's got going. So at that point, I went and talked to Gary and asked him, could he use some clerical help? And he said, yes. So what I am asking is that you allow me, that you guys approve the creation of an administrative clerical position for City Hall. And that person will be, and I've got a copy of the job description in, in your packet, but that person will be tasked with, with helping Regina and Tina and Gary with clerical duties. And it's an entry level position that, that would start at our minimum wage for the city. But it would, and it, but it would be a full time position. Because that was what I was evaluating when I was talking to everybody, does it need to, could it be a part time position or would it need to be a full time position? And when I looked at everything this person's going to have to do, it's going to have to be a full time position.
And it would include benefits?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
I'm making a motion to approve creating the new administrative clerical position.
I think it's a good idea.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the creation of new administrative clerical position. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Item F is consideration of amendment to the Police Department general orders.
In your package, I put in the new wording for the general order 7.03. And it's, it's, as James likes to say, Mr. Fincham, it's housekeeping. The law changed a couple of years ago about personally identifying information that we can release during arrest reports or, or incident reports. And it's regulated by the state law. So we put also in the wording, or prevailing law, because the, this current law is set to sunset in 2026. But if they put it back in and change the law, that we'll still be in compliance by saying the prevailing law would, would take over. So we're just asking that you do that amendment for us so we are in compliance with the state law. And we've been in compliance, it's just changes our general orders to match it.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, what is your pleasure?
Most approve the amendment.
Seconding.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the consideration amendment to the Police Department general orders. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And any nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
I appreciate you, y'all done Maurice. I see the police been out all night and regs and all that, just, tell them we appreciate them, okay?
I will, thank you all.
Item 10 is bids, purchases and expenses, and we apparently have none. Item 11 is comments from citizens.
Well, Mayor, I have a comment before Tim gets up here. I guess most of y'all know, I've been a part of the softball family here in Cock County for over 20 years. And when I, when I say softball family, that means the high school, the middle school, reg teams, travel teams, et cetera. We're having a, the softball family, and all those that I mentioned, are having a fundraising spaghetti dinner on August, or, excuse me, April the 2nd to raise enough money to complete our project we've had in the works forever, to build an indoor facility for the, for the girls up beside the high school softball field. We've already broken ground, we've got a pad ready for con, for gravel and concrete. We're going to put a metal enclosed building there that'll be big enough for batting cages and, and just a little indoor hitting facility, et cetera. I'm just inviting everybody to come, April the 2nd.
What time?
Probably at 6 o'clock, I'm not sure what time.
It's 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, thank you.
About 7:00.
Some radio station, 5:00 to 7:00. We're going to invite all the politicians and.
Appreciate the job y'all have done too, Terry. I see y'all working on that up there and you've come a long way on it so far.
We've got, we've got a lot of donations already. Like I said, we put in a pad up there, bulldozers, track holes for two days. We've got the concrete, concrete coming and then we're, we're going to put in our order for our building. So you ask a question?
Okay, I want to say.
It, oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be at the reg building, the, the spaghetti dinner's going to be at the reg building, the county.
The county reg building.
The county reg building, yes. So they're going to let us use that, have that spaghetti dinner.
Who's cooking the spaghetti?
I'm not sure. Katie Brock, probably.
If it's a pumpkin, that'd be good.
It's not going to be Chef Boyardee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any others?
I would mention a couple of things. This time last year, we brought our kids down that won the T M S A single A state championship. This year, a year later, I wish we had our team here, but we, we did make it back to the, to the state. We, we played like beers in headlights. We, we had some, the, the teams that we beat last year beat us this year. So again, we have an opportunity to compete and, and you guys supported our team and our school. And it was, again, a, a major learning experience for me as a coach and as a, as a person for these kids. Second thing, James is right, you guys have done more for parks in our community in the 27 years that I've been here in Newport or as director. There's two things that you may remember or may not remember is when Jimmy Lindsey came on in 1958 or 62 or ever what year that was, the city had a chance to buy the trailer park that borders the pavilions there, that I think Apolovich owns it now or.
Yeah, that's weird.
It's some name like that, but we didn't buy it. And now you see the need, we should have bought that. We, you know, Jimmy Lindsey's father offered it to the city first. The second thing that came to mind was at the Smith Street, Touchdown Street. That's the second area that our town had a chance to, to purchase, to expand our city park. And you can see that we didn't do it, but we needed those properties, what we have at our city park. So this is a wonderful opportunity to expand our, our park system. And the woodland is, would be a, a major impact to us as a department, but to our town. The opportunities are going to be astronomical for what we can create there. It may not be level ground, but when you go up there and you look at the views and, and you see what the trends are that are happening nationwide and trail programs are number one for kids on their, their bikes or even adults to have a mountain bike trails. Of course, Lucas can testify to that, to what they're doing at Hartford. And why can't the city of Newport do that? We've looked at it for many moons of what are our opportunities? And this is an excellent opportunity for us as a city to get that property.
Any kind of case study about what the Knoxville Air Waters program, any ABC, ABC, what they done for the city to put on their.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any others?
Our name's Charlie here to make you mind of this one, make you nervous. No, I'll, I'll, oh, sorry, Coach. Now, I will throw one thing out there this, for Tim. Now, if you all were to recall, excuse me, if you were to recall last year, when he was celebrating and on top of the world with his, with his state championship team, he was also lamenting that there's no way he gets close to going back this year. And, and that he may just retire so he can go out on top and, you know, and, and so I discouraged him from doing that. I told him, never say never. And so I commend him, he got back to the, to the state tournament this year. He didn't win, but he got back and he gave himself absolutely no chance of doing that. But he did it, he pulled that off. So I, I want to point that out, that he didn't give himself a chance at all to get back there, but he got back there. And I think that was a major accomplishment with what all he lost from last year and what he, the hand he was kind of dealt this year. So that, that has to say something for his coaching ability to be able to make that happen. So I just want to throw that out there and remind everybody of, of his, oh, woe is me speech last year about who all had moved on to high school and how he, he was, his team was decimated and had, had basically no chance this year at all. So I don't know if he was trying to be like Lou Holtz and, and downplay the abilities, but, but he didn't seem to have a lot of confidence in himself, but, but he, he hung in there and he, he got back.
I can testify to the, the.
Five minutes.
Lucas, you think about the call me, he helped me that I was on the board at, on the Cosby Highway. And of course, I was tied up and didn't get a chance to talk to him, but supposedly they had me dancing on the board on YouTube or TikTok or something and late beating the drums. So James said that he got a real good kick out of.
Yeah, the Dockery dance. I saw it, you could see, you got called at the traffic light there, C P S, you could, you, you could sit there long enough to see it rotate around.
But the real story, if I'd have got a hold of that kid when that happened, I'd have probably chipped him out.
Tell him the truth now, when I had you in the sixth grade with the battle, that started your dancing career.
It's one of the biggest battles.
He's good ball. I'm proud of him, he's kind of beating into it.
That too.
Okay.
Appreciate the job the board have done, Gary and Lucas back there. Appreciate that. We see a lot of improvements to do, y'all.
Sure. Are there any others? Hearing none, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.